Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. Dr. Sylvia is out today with a previous commitment. We're just going to get right into it. First item on the agenda is public participation. Is anyone in the audience that wishes to speak before the committee? Anyone? Seeing none. Moving on to good news. Anyone have any good news?
I do. I would just like to thank the custodians and our grounds crew for the fantastic job cleaning the many days worth of snow. We certainly appreciate all their hard work. They were fantastic. As well, we would like to thank the parents, the teachers, our staff, our administrators for all their patience and their flexibility during the last several snow days. We really appreciate your help, and I hope that we have no more snow days for the rest of this winter.
Anyone else with good news?
I have one. Something that happened this past snowstorm that I thought is just worth noting, that I thought was amazing. With some of the Facebook pages that are out there, PTAs, the Wareham PTA paid, or the PTA pages as well as some of the Wareham Facebook pages, some of our administrators and teachers took it upon themselves to send out posts talking about things that parents can do with their kids, and things like build a snowman and then measure it and send in, or send in pictures, or I just thought that it was a great trend and something that I hope continues because it seems as a parent, as well as some of the other parents out there, being able to get that kind of just very simple post to say, hey, have you ever thought about reading this, or this is what we were planning on doing, or here are some math games, or a website to go to, or something like that, I think helps parents in frustrating situations of trying to figure out what to do with their kids, to kind of focus in on education in school and taking an hour out in a day, and sometimes we can't think of things. So it was great that our teachers and some of our administrators reached out and did that. So I just want to say kudos and hats off to them.
That is nice. Anyone else?
Austin.
All right, moving on. We're going to do the minutes for the meeting of January 7th and January 14th. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of January 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. Are those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are those opposed? Abstain? Passes four zero. A motion to approve the minutes of January 14th?
So moved.
Did you get that?
Second.
It was Mel.
It was Mel. No, okay. Any discussion on January 14th? Seeing none. Are those in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero. Okay, moving on to 2015, 2016 Wareham High School Course of Studies. Mr. Palladino.
I'm going to call up Assistant Principal Mrs. Freitas to join me, and Department Heads, Mr. Michael Murray from the Humanities, Cindy Sylvia from Career Culture and Wellness, Katie Marchesault from the Math and Science, and Andrea Cannon will be joining us at some point in time as well from the Special Ed Department. So I appreciate your rescheduling us for the 2015-16 Course of Studies. I know we got snowed out at the last school committee meeting, but I appreciate you putting us back on. Before I start, I just want to kind of talk about how we got to this point in time. We have excellent collaboration with our students in regards to their needs. Department Heads go back to their teachers and talk about students' needs and what we should be offering. And then the Department Heads work closely with Ms. Freitas and myself to curtail this to a point where we feel it's presentable to the school committee and where it's in the best interest of the students. And I really appreciate not only Ms. Freitas' work, but the Department Heads' work on this. Again, it's a collaborative effort, and it's really great to have them working in the students' best interests. So we appreciate their hard work, and it's great that they're just a few rooms over. So if we have any questions, we can have those type of conversations. So without further ado, I know you folks like to have the short version of the changes, and I do believe you all have that. I do have extra copies if anyone did not receive that in their packet. Be more than happy to hand out copies if you need them. Well, good? Okay, so what we'll do is I can go through each department and talk about the changes, and certainly can ask questions of me, Ms. Freitas, or the Department Head, and we can talk about that. So there are some new courses in Career Culture and Wellness, and we can talk about those. Specifically, the first page is the Career and Technology Education Program, Business Technology and Applied Arts. We're looking at some new courses, Distributed Ed OJT, or On-the-Job Training. This is a course we had in the past that student interest has come around on that. Introduction to Culinary Arts. We are hoping to eventually have a Chapter 74 program in Culinary Arts, and this is our entry into that realm. We also have Personal Finance, which is a course we've offered in the past, and Technical Drawing. We have a new teacher that is very excited about Technical Drawing and Engineering, and we're hoping eventually to bring in some robotics into that. So those are the courses. You see the course descriptions. If they're approved, they'll become course numbers. And I think it's important to make sure we're all on the same page. These are potential courses we could offer. We will offer nothing more, but we may not offer some of these. It's all based on student interest, and certainly when it comes down to it, making sure we have enough of our core sections covered. A lot of these will be electives, which are required under the Mass Core, and which get us to our 130 credits per graduate. Any questions on the new courses in Career Technology Education Program?
Mr. Lazarus?
Not really a question, but a comment. I am very happy to see this introduction to Culinary Arts. I think this is absolutely terrific. It's something that we had in the high school quite some time ago, and it's good to see it back. I'm also happier to see that Personal Finance is coming back. And I see in here that this course is going to talk to and address the issues of budgeting, consumer purchasing, banking, and specifically credit cards.
Yes, and not-
I think that this is something that students should know about before this, especially before they go to college, because they will be inundated with free credit cards.
Yes.
So I think both of these are going to be a big step forward for the high school.
Sure. And if I can, on the culinary, Cindy and I had a chance to take a tour of a school that has a full culinary program in the area, and we also dissected what programs Wareham students are enrolling in at vocational schools, and this was the number-one program that Wareham students are enrolling in. And Michelle, thank you for that list, by the way. That was very helpful. So there is some history here, and as you brought up, you know, we had this program in place years ago, but we're looking to take it to that next level. This is introductory. Hopefully, you know, we whet the palate, and then we get them involved.
No play on words intended, there, right?
No pun, right. And then, you know, and then from there, we get them involved in a little more in-depth Chapter 74 program a year and a half from now.
Twelve years ago, Foods 1 and 2 were the highest subscribed programs in the entire school. So to bring it back, but to bring it back in a more structured way, I think, is going to be really exciting. I think the kids will really like it. And it is the number-one shop that they're going into outside of Wareham.
Mrs. Fugan?
The Personal Finance course that you're offering, is that going to include, you know, most banking is online and most things are done online. Will it have a strong technical piece to-
Absolutely. Absolutely. And along with that Personal Finance, it's also going to have an intense look at college and its costs and repay.
So Excel documents, do you feel that you have the technology that's needed in the classroom to accomplish what you're trying to do?
Yeah, absolutely. And not just Excel, but there are other software programs that are going to be much more intensive, that the kids are going to be able to get their hands on, that are free software.
So just the one thing that I'm finding is that Excel skills, because there are all these online, easy-to-use systems, you know, again, you're the teacher, I'm not, I just, so what's happening, though, with some of the budgeting pieces? Out in the workforce, there are some organizations that can't afford some of the software that's out there, and they go back to the try-and-true Excel, and being able to master Excel is-
That's a requirement in software solutions. So at least we know every kid that graduates has exposure to Excel.
Great.
That's part of the graduation requirements, and it's right in the Course of Studies, and there's a big emphasis on Excel, more so than any of the other office programs offered in software solutions.
Thanks.
And they're also in that class attaching it to Google Sheets, and what Google Sheets can do versus Excel, and differentiating when to use which. That's what's being taught currently.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Swett? I, like my colleagues, love to see this Personal Finance. I went to see, I participated in the Cape Cod Five-
Credit for Life.
-did something in the-
You're going to do it again this year, too, right?
Okay. How did you feel about that program? I don't mean, I'm not setting you up to say it was great or to criticize it, more from a content perspective. How would you, how do you compare what they tried to do in that six-hour period compared to what you're going to be trying to do in a, is this a full-year course?
Half-year.
Half-year, in a half-year course. How would you compare what they did to what you're trying to accomplish?
Well, I guess I would break it down in the Credit for Life, what they did in six hours, I used to do in two lessons in marketing, right before the kids would graduate, because I thought it was that important. So to watch them expand upon what I was able to do in about 160 minutes, and what they were able to do in six hours, and I think further expanding upon, I mean, these kids spend about 15 minutes in a booth learning about mortgages. Can't spend 15 minutes in a booth learning about mortgages. You have to be able to identify what a good rate is, identify how to have a good credit score to get that good rate. It's much more in-depth than just a 15-minute walk-through mortgage lender.
And where does the curriculum for this course come from?
The curriculum from this course, there is a curriculum that we can purchase, but also there is a curriculum in place that was about four years ago, that we used to offer this as a hybrid in the math department, that we've adopted into the business department. So I'm going to take a look at that, make sure it's current, because there's no need to teach the kids something that they'll never use. So we're going to make sure it's 21st century, it's going to be current, and that it's going to be applicable to what they can sink their teeth into when they leave Wareham High School.
Thank you.
I know, I agree with what everyone was saying, especially Mel, and how happy he was to see this coming back. About the culinary, the Culinary Arts, where would you be doing that? And you've given me a couple tours there, and I know you have some area that used to be used for this, I guess, but that is now used for some young adult program or something?
Right, right. So we-
We have a plan.
We have a plan. There is potential towards the back end of our school, there are some traditional shops, and there's a potential for one room to be kind of revamped and for us to have what's needed to get this off the ground. We're going to kind of do it in a phased-in plan, where we're going to get the essentials the first year, and then, you know, build on that every year. The infrastructure costs are going to be somewhat significant, but we feel if we can spread out over a few years, it'll be much more palatable.
So you won't be using the space at all where that young adult program is?
No, it's just, the way it was renovated, I don't think it's conducive to what we want to do, which is bring it up to a Chapter 74 standard.
Yeah.
I think if we were looking to do what we used to do, we may have looked a little harder at that room, but I think the cost-effectiveness based on what's been done to that room, and also displacing those kids, you know, they're very familiar with that room, I don't think would be fair to those students.
Okay.
And to have a true Culinary Arts program, you don't have four mini stoves that have four mini burners where they cook four mac and cheeses.
Okay.
You want to have a culinary program where they have industrial restaurant-like facility, where they are creating food and appetizers, and creating a menu, and having a small place where there could actually be customers, so that they can get that service end of it, too.
Okay.
So that's where it differs from food to culinary.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Personal Finance, is there a way to actually require that course?
Oh, I wish.
No?
One of the things I always leave my seniors with when I'm in the classroom is don't get credit cards, and if you do, these are the ones to get, and this is why. And I think that they have little grasp on what's coming at them financially. I think that a course like this is probably, I mean, I'm biased because I think that business is very, very important when they leave our walls, but we give our kids an edge, and we give our kids an edge in all our departments, and we send them out there blind, not knowing financially what to expect. And we owe them that, because they have all those pressures that are going to be coming their way the second they turn 18. Their first credit card application is going to come in their name with their choice to decide to have it or not, and I don't think they're aware that they're going to get 27 more just like it.
So we can't require it?
Hoping they get in trouble.
So I think what we'd like to do is get it back in the rotation this year, and then certainly we would entertain a conversation about whether to require it or not. At this point in time, I'm not sure we could absorb it as a requirement based on the number of sections that we'd have to offer, but I would certainly entertain the conversation a year from now when we're here, and hopefully, the course was requested by the students, able to run it, get the curriculum going, and then I'd certainly entertain a conversation about whether it should be a requirement, and maybe we look at, is there something we should take off the table, so we're not forcing some of those kids to really have no options, specifically students that have IEPs.
And is this class going to displace any others?
It could. It could.
No.
I mean, it's an elective course, so it could displace another elective course.
Got you.
Depending on student interest.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on, over to, I believe, ELA, and we have another elective course. We're hoping there is, we believe there's going to be a strong number of students that are interested in this. This is Introduction to Dramatic Arts. We have a great drama program, and we're looking to embed a course during the school year for some of those students that may be interested. It is an ELA elective. Mr. Murray is the ELA Department Head, and certainly we would, any questions you may have on that, we certainly entertain.
Mrs. Fugan?
With the increase in dramatic companies within Wareham, or in Wareham, so there's the Buzzers Bay production, are there partnerships that go on between, or internships, or any kind of conversations that go on with some of the outside-of-school activities that are going around on plays and musicals?
I'm not sure on that. I do know that a lot of our kids after high school go on into college and into local drama programs. I'm not sure as far as Buzzers Bay. I know I spoke with the director a few times. I believe there are students involved, but I don't know with 100% certainty, you know, how many kids and who those graduates would be.
Okay, just because when I saw this, what a great opportunity to then, I mean, not only in our own productions, but then also being able to learn from, you know, folks that have been out there for a while, so just wanted to-
This is that teacher's first six months, she's in her first six months of being the director of drama, so she's hit the ground running, but again, you know, she's got a lot going on.
Little time, okay. Little bit of time. Thank you.
Mr. Swett?
There are some courses, I think, that should have warning labels on them. I have two nieces who are following their passions, and I'm not sure they will ever leave their parents' homes, because they can't make a living doing precisely what this is going to get them excited about. I understand why people are enthusiastic about this, but they should be cautioned. Don't get too passionate about it for a career.
Shoot. I think it's kind of very similar to, these type of students, I think you can relate to, this is kind of the non-tennis-playing, top 10% students that are involved. To categorize these students, so I think, I agree with you. I know exactly where you're going. Maybe just like they're not going to be tennis pros, maybe they're not going to be professional actors, but I do believe it's definitely a passion of theirs, and these are some of our best and brightest who are involved in drama. I think you, I know you've been to a few plays, and I know you appreciate those folks.
I appreciate it.
I wholeheartedly disagree. The skills that are learned in directing, you're taking, you're a numbers guy, you're taking a percentage of what? Of the population out there that won't be able to make it. So kudos to the students that are going to sign up for this. The life-changing skills that they're going to get will easily be transferable to many different opportunities.
Plus, I bet your nieces really understand human nature. And that's important, too.
It's good if you're poor to understand it.
Okay, so, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Murray, you're the Department Head for the ELA at the high school?
Yes.
During our all-day meeting, you know, with the principals, one thing that really struck me was the middle school principal saying that, you know, we really need to do is try to make sure that we're not sending kids to the high school that are non-readers. And of course, the finance committee, the person there from the finance committee brought up the interesting point that, you know, why didn't we catch them at the elementary school? And this was really news to me. I didn't know that we were sending non-readers anywhere. So I'm kind of curious, how many non-readers do you get at the ninth grade at the high school?
Well, I know several adults who are non-readers, but I think it depends on, you know, childhood development, you know. I mean, in the past few years, kindergarten kids have been pushed to read, and now there's some studies that suggest that maybe that's not such great for their development. So, you know, I have a second grader myself who's just learning to read now, you know, developmentally delayed, so whoever comes to the high school, we work with them on their level and bring them to the level that they need to be at.
This year is an example. How many non-readers showed up at the ninth grade?
I don't have a solid number. That honestly, I don't.
Rough idea?
I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, I look at MCAS scores when they come in and place them accordingly.
So you don't know if they can read or not? You just look at the MCAS score?
We-
I think, I think part of it would be what grade level they would be reading at. And so if we would look at students, we could look at, they're reading at a second-grade level, fourth-grade level, something like that. I think that would be probably easy for us to figure out than strictly a non-reader.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, we could do some information digging.
Mr. Chair? I mean, I think also you have to take into account whether there's 504s, or, you know, that they're on IEPs, things like that, so they're, you know-
I understand.
But I, all I'm saying is that if we are going to ask for a report on that, that we make sure that we're, all pieces of data are coming in for it, instead of just like a statement that they're either non-readers or readers, that it's, there are several factors that go into a learning issue that a child might be having when they first enter into any of our schools.
I can totally accept, you know, cognitive issues and such, and that should be, you know, determined, but I want to know all the facts.
Sure.
I think when you get all the facts, too, it's important to take a look at, how many schools has the student been to? Are they a Wareham product from kindergarten on up? Because we, there's so many transitions that occur in the schools, and obviously middle school, elementary school, high school, we get new kids every single day, so it's tough, you know, when you're getting a kid put in who's a second grade, you know, has a second-grade reading level, and, you know, unfortunately, they're in fifth or sixth grade.
Yeah, no, I'd like to see the real numbers on that. That's just me. Yes, move on.
Okay, so no changes in the fine arts, music, foreign language. We do set, we do have some math changes, and I'll bring up Katie Marchesault to talk about those. Basically, we remove the pre-calc, college prep honors, looking to push those students into the calculus AP course. And we have a new elective, which we're pretty excited about. We don't traditionally have a lot of electives in math, and this is a bootstrap algebra class that we're hoping there'll be some interest in with the students, integrating a lot of technology, and we're kind of using that video game theme as well as part of the units. But certainly, we will answer any questions you may have on the math courses and/or changes.
When you say getting rid of the pre-calculus CP and honors and pushing to AP calculus, what about the students who wouldn't be able to handle AP calculus? Where would they, where would they go?
So it's our initiative to move towards that, and certainly we'd want to differentiate within that class, and I'm sure you're aware of some of the Common Core changes. So some of the Common Core changes are exact, doing exactly what you said, pushing the curriculum down to different places. So it's not necessarily a gap that we're creating for students, but a change in curriculum.
And the goal is that the Algebra II course embeds the pre-calculus course, so that the students are getting that in the Algebra II, and then they're ready for the calculus. So it's probably a little bit different than when you went through, but you're not too far off.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Mrs. Fugan?
So I didn't have questions specifically on this, but I just had a quick question around, were there courses that were requested in fine arts and music and foreign language that just decided not to continue with?
So there were courses that, based on staffing cuts from last year, we couldn't offer, that we would have liked to have offered, but we were able to place those students in other elective courses that may have been their second or third choices. But we will run all the traditional courses we run, we have run in the past. The difference is, we won't have as many sections.
In those three categories?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on. Cindy's department again. Here, Physical Education. There are some changes based in the units that are being assigned to Physical Education. It's pretty standard, but we're really trying to differentiate between the ninth and 10th grade, where we're trying to keep those students in there, and then we have the 11th and 12th. There were, because of some staffing issues, we had some issues with being able to run those, true 9, 10, true 11, 12, but we're really making a concerted effort to make sure that we have those grades there. These were some of the activities that were done, and you see they're very similar, and they get into a little bit more depth at the latter stages of the student's career.
Mr. Swett?
How should the effectiveness of a physical education program be determined?
The effectiveness of the physical education? You mean in a classroom setting or the overall program at the end?
Well, I'm thinking of not a health, health course, but I'm thinking about actual physical education, where they're-
Well, the Pacer exam that the kids are given every single 9, 10, 11th, and 12th, the Pacer exam, that would be one measure. I know that the goal, there are goals that the students set themselves, there are encourage goals from the instructors to get into the healthy fitness zone, so I think that's one measurement. The other one is on their participation and their skill level mixture in the different units that they study.
I'm told, Mr. Palladino hates it when I say this, but I'm told by the students with whom I interact, that the level of seriousness with which people, students take the Pacer varies tremendously, and I'm being kind. And even Phys Ed, it's my understanding does not count towards their GPA. Is that an accurate statement?
Currently, but not next year, according to the new Course of Studies. That was one of the changes.
I'm pleased to hear that. So you expect people to take the Pacer somewhat more seriously in the future?
I'm going to be honest with you, while I'm in the Phys Ed classrooms, I noticed that last year, and I've made some recommendations to the staff on how to improve the Pacer score, and one of them is to not have spectators while the, while the kids are engaging in the Pacer. I think that that really is a significant deterrent for kids to go all out and to really, truly see if they can get into the healthy fitness zone. So we did away with any kind, and when I say spectator, I don't mean like somebody from lunch. I mean like, well, one group in the Phys Ed class is doing the Pacer test, the other classes, the other part of the class is waiting and watching. So no longer is that the case. Now they're in a different place, doing a different part of the Pacer, where there's nobody watching. So I think that the scores have gone up, where the kids are taking it a little bit more serious, where they're less self-conscious about it.
Had a chance to observe two classes doing the Pacer exam, and it was pretty competitive. It was, the kids took it very seriously. So hopefully, we're starting to see a change.
Anyone else? All right, moving on.
Okay, science, there's just a few word changes, and then we're going on to history, and we do have a few changes. Mr. Murray is the Humanities Department, which is ELA in history. And we do have some AP courses. One, which is new, is the Government and Politics. And two, what we've tried to do in the past, and it hasn't, as you know from the data, it hasn't been too successful, is we run the micro and macro economics course as one. What we'd like to do, if the numbers allow, is to have the micro and macro as two separate courses. courses, because those students are doing, covering two curriculums, two AP exams, and I think we're doing a disservice to those students. So we'd like to differentiate that, come up with two sections, and hopefully the numbers warrant that. We also have a death and dying course, which we've had in the past, and it's taken a little bit of a hiatus, we're looking to bring that back, and Her Story, which is Introduction to Women's History. So those are the new courses in Humanities. Certainly, we would love to have any questions.
Anyone? Mr. Lazarus?
Mr. Palladino, the economics courses, are those going to be run independently? Or is it one first semester, one second semester?
Independently.
And secondly, I really hope that the women's history course takes off. I really do. We've tried this before, and I really hope it takes off. I think that that's an area that our students should be much more involved in than they are, and this would definitely fill the bill.
Thank you. Mrs. Fugan, did you have a question?
A comment. So in taking a look at, at the Social Studies Department and especially the new courses that you're adding around the Her Story introduction, the, tell me if it actually exists today in high school where there are courses that teach around things, class systems, empathy, looking at what our students are going to face when they go out there, which are, you know, all the differences between money to status to power and, and teaching that, how to learn about it and then how to work with it. Is that currently something that's taught, that's weaved in through some of this? Because when I think of Her Story, I read the description and I said, wouldn't it be great instead of, you know, the course will provide, you know, experiences of, you know, classes in our society analyzed, like you could just switch that out to talk about more of what our students are going to face when they get out there in the real world?
Well, I would argue again that literature does cover that, but in terms of history, you know, by virtue of the fact that the, the study of history has somewhat fragmented into various points of view since the 60s, the social history movement, I think it's embedded within the curriculum, that, that kind of, you know, flowing, flowing through different perspectives. You know, we have in terms of practical knowledge about the real world, so to speak. Are you asking about, say, like an American government course, politics course?
I'm thinking, I keep going back to, and it might not work within this department, but things like Rachel's Challenge, when, when they're, you're talking about society and the world that they're about to walk into. I know that they're, you know, that our students are dealing with it every single day, but there is something that when you are on your own, that sometimes, you know, it's like a brick wall that hits you. There are things that are important to have in curriculum that helps our students with that piece of it, and I probably am not explaining myself, but I feel like that there's just a piece missing.
The Math Department chair just reminded me that we teach sociology, but again, I know I'm speaking for history now, but I'd have to say that all those things that you just described, I think the great novels and the great poems and drama speak to that.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's bits and pieces in many of the curriculum areas. I'm thinking, you know, empathy and the Health Department, the health curriculum, I think Mike mentioned it in some of the government, I think there's bits and pieces, but to answer your question, I don't think there's one course that covers all of that curriculum.
And I just spoke volumes when I saw Her Story, and I think to myself, all right, there are, there are stories in history, but, you know, along the lines of class systems and working with other cultures, so. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Swett?
I applaud the direction you're going with the economics, I think it's the, it's the right way to go. I guess a comment. I think after Cindy gets through with the personal finance course, they will have a good idea of how the world is. But if they want to understand why the world is that way, they need to take economics. So both of them really need to be part of the curriculum in order for people to leave high school with a good understanding, because if they just take personal finance and they don't have a base of foundation for why the world is the way it is, they may or may not remember it. Interest rates is a perfectly good example. So I would strongly recommend that we look seriously at somehow marrying these two and saying, for the first two years, we want you to figure out a way to take personal finance or the reverse. I mean, I could almost see it done. My problem is I'm not sure a freshman is ready to take economics.
Right.
But putting that aside, so, but I think they are ready to take personal finance. So if you've got two years to take personal finance, and then you've got two more years to take these two economics courses, I think they will come out as graduates who really have a good understanding of the world and why it is the way it is. Mike, you were going to say something?
Well, we are running Intro to Economics this year for the first time. It's an elective, it's open to 10th through 12th. So students who may not feel they're ready for the AP course, you know, they can get their feet wet with an Intro to Economics, taught by the same instructor.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just had a question. How does it work now when you, when they take the AP test? Is there a separate micro test, a separate macro test?
There always has been.
So right, right now you're teaching, it has one course, so this will give, this will give them a much better understanding by breaking it out this way.
Right.
Yeah, I applaud that.
Okay, as Cindy mentioned, I think we did a much better job this year of making sure we listed every class, whether it be at the level it's at and the fact that we're going to be counting everything to its class rank, so we're excited about that and want to thank the curriculum director, Andrea, for her help on that. I think it's been, it's been a good process, and we're excited about the program of studies. So that concludes our presentation for tonight.
Mr. Swett?
We've got some tough decisions to make over the next couple of months. Two areas that I'd like to hear your thoughts and as well as anybody else who was gracious enough to be here tonight.
Notice Mike's moving very quickly.
One is, you're justifiably proud that, that people really do have to work hard in order to get 130 credits. But there's a cost associated with requiring that, and unfortunately, by cost, I mean dollars and cents. Do you have any idea how much it really does cost to have that as compared to fewer credits which other districts require?
You know, I don't really look at it as cost because our teachers a few years back agreed to pick up an extra course so we could offer these electives, so we could be aligned with math score. So I don't look at it as a cost because the way I look at it, our teachers are saving money already because they all agreed to take an extra course on.
I'm just looking at it from a budgetary perspective. And if you're telling me there's, there's no cost associated with, with, with doing that, then fine, then it won't be a factor in our decision-making, but if there are costs, then I'd like to know.
There's obviously costs. I, I think, you know, I reflect back before the teachers stepped up and, you know, we had 150, 175 students in a study hall in the cafeteria. That wasn't educationally sound. Our students are coming out of Wareham High School with the most competitive transcript of any graduate ever at Wareham High School, and the schools we're getting into and the financial aid and the scholarship these students are receiving is unbelievable, let alone the local scholarships of a quarter million dollars every year that we hand out. So, you know, I, I would have a problem with us decreasing the requirement to graduate from Wareham High School. I don't think that serves our students well, and I don't think it was the nature of the discussions and negotiations that occurred. I don't think it was, it was in those negotiations that we would go backwards.
Why haven't other districts felt compelled to follow suit and have a similarly high requirement?
I really can't speak for other schools. I would assume there's contractual and financial reasons, but I really can't speak to other schools and why they haven't followed suit.
The second area is, we have some very small classes. Once again, I'm not criticizing anybody, I think the Course of Studies is, keeps getting better, and, and you've had really good results and gotten back to Level One and all that's good. This is unfortunately strictly in the context of, of this budget process that we have to go through every year. If, if the school committee had a policy that you couldn't initiate a course without X number of kids in it, sort of a minimum level of productivity for the valuable person that's standing in front of those kids, what do you think that number should be in order to, in order to save enough money to minimize the impact or to maximize the impact on the budget? Because cuts are coming. That's, we're going to talk more about that later, and if you guys exit before that, that's probably smart.
I'll be here.
Because, you know, you'll have better things to do with your evening. But the bottom line is they're coming because the town can't afford the budget for the town or the schools. So my question is, if we had that as a policy, what do you think that number should be?
Sure. I'd just like to say, two years at Level One. You mentioned we backed to Level One, this is the second year.
Yes, I realize that.
All right, I just, the press is here, so I'd like to reiterate that. So...
It's old news.
I understand, but we, we like to keep it around as long as possible. The, you know, one of the goals for us every year is to be as efficient as possible with our scheduling process. We try and spread out the students based on, obviously, their requirements first and foremost, and then from there, we look at the electives, and not every kid gets their first or second choice of elective. Sometimes we dip down even lower based on class size and things of that nature, but we try to make sure that they are acceptable levels in class size. What the tricky part is for us in scheduling is that you have, well, you have advanced placement courses. So let's just say you arbitrarily put a number of 10. Well, we've got some of the, I mean, we've got two students applying to Harvard, we've got some of the best and brightest students in the area at Wareham High School. Now, one of those students is taking a chemistry class with a less than desirable number of students enrolled in it. So do you punish those high-achieving students by not offering those classes that may have less than 10 students in them? We're doing it on the other end of the spectrum, so to me, it's fair for our best and our brightest, and it's fair for our students that may have some cognitive disabilities or delays. So I, I think it's tough to put a number. The other piece that I think is important for people to realize is we may start off with a number that's acceptable, so what would you do at the point in time in November when that number dips below that acceptable number? So I, I think that's tough. Do you tell those, those eight kids that are left in their class?
No, of course not.
Tough, you know, the committee has, the school committee has a policy. So I think that it's tough when you put hard numbers on it. I will say, the department heads go through this, Debbie and I go through this, we try and work as hard as we can to spread it out. Unfortunately, it's not like any of the other schools in the district, you know, where you have a team and you put 22 kids at each, at each team and they rotate around.
I understand.
We have levels, we have requirements, we have a math score that we follow, so it's, it gets tricky. And, you know, there's not, there's not too many kids that have the same exact schedule in that school walking through the hallways. Every, every kid is different, every kid has different interests, we have some great programs, you know, you've heard from the DECA students, we've got a great business program, we've got a great art program, you know, we've got so many great programs. I think it's tough to set a number, but I understand it's a business when, you know, at the end of the day, and, you know, you've got to, you know, you've got to do what's best for the school. And we, you know, we do have some classes that are over 30, so there's some offset there. I think it's hard to put a number, but I can assure you, we do the best we can to make sure we're making smart decisions that are in the best interest of the students, and we're not running classes when possible with less than a desirable number.
By the way, I do not consider your high school to be a business, just to be clear.
Well, you know, in the end, when you talk about budget cuts looming, it is a business, I understand.
Cindy, did you want to say something?
Well, Scott touched upon it at the end. I've seen classes that, before we could offer a third section, we squeezed 32 or 33 kids in who need that class and who want that class, and teachers who manage that. So at the other end of the spectrum, if you have someone, you know, a class of 12, well, that 12 in that 32 is now an average class size of 22 if you marry those two courses together. So with every small number that you see, I think you have to equally look at the high numbers that are being taught in some of the other courses, because then you true get, you truly get a balance, because the schedule does not allow for equitable distribution of students depending on the period. You know, if a lot of kids who are interested in AP Economics want to take DECA, well, you can't offer AP Economics and DECA at the same period. So you're going to have some, you can either say, oh, well, you've got to pick, or you can offer a flexible schedule in which, you know, I've had years where I've had 14 kids in one class and 34 in another. Well, why couldn't they just balance my classes? Well, they couldn't because we have to facilitate what those students need in order to get the education that they desire and that will best suit them for their career and college choices.
And it seems like every year, there are a couple periods where there are a group of students that need that class to graduate, and we look at the numbers and go, okay, is this a smart way to do this? Is there any other period we could put it? And we try and move it around, and inevitably, this group of seniors needs to have this course, there's no way around it because of their requirements and when certain courses are offered, some courses are only offered one period. So inevitably, you have a class that you're not excited about the numbers, but you have to run.
To be continued, and thank you.
Thank you.
My turn. Page seven on, on the LIDRA document. It's just you highlight a class of 2018 and 2019, and I'm not clear why those are highlighted.
Because they were, at least one of those courses was not represented in last year's Course of Studies because you have attrition through graduation.
No, no, this is the credit requirement.
Oh, I'm sorry, what page, I'm sorry?
Page seven.
Again, because the class of 2014 would have been on last year's Course of Studies, I'm not...
Oh.
So through graduation, we just move the other classes up.
Okay. And I may have missed it, but is it designated in here which classes are also for dual enrollment students from the middle school?
You know, that's a great question. I don't believe we designate them because they're freshman-level courses, but I can tell, I can tell you what they are.
Can we maybe highlight it, like put a little footnote there somewhere on those classes?
Well, they're freshman-level courses, they're receiving freshman-level credit.
So any freshman-level class, or I mean...
It's English nine honors.
English nine, alright.
Algebra one honors, Intro to Physical World honors. I'm going to let him write those down.
No, you know, I, but go ahead, I'll just...
If you want to email me.
No, 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 save for the record and I'll get it later.
Okay, so English nine honors, Algebra one honors, Intro to Physical World honors, and World History.
Okay. And now, now those kids, they, they take midterms with everyone at the high school.
Yes, they did.
And I'm hearing that when you have midterms, those, that day, the high schoolers get a half day.
Correct.
But the, but the middle schoolers don't, and then, and I guess that that puts them at a disadvantage already.
We, I spoke with the middle school principal, and he felt that based on the curriculum, there was where it needed to be done at the middle school.
But if, if the point of the midterm, if the point, if the point of the half day is because, you know, you've got to study even more for the next day, shouldn't those kids, and maybe it's not your call, maybe it's the middle school principal's call, but, I mean, shouldn't those kids have a half day?
Sure. So the agreement was they'd be with us in the morning and, and the middle school in the afternoon, and he felt strongly that they would need to do some curriculum work in the afternoon. I, I don't want to speak for him, but I do believe he gave him some time to study as well.
Okay.
But certainly, that's a question you can direct to Mr. Minkel.
Okay, I just had this brought to my attention about two days ago, literally, so...
And they do, the kids are doing awesome. They're just, it's a great bunch of 42 young men and women, and they're, they did a great job in the midterms. It's really, the, the, kind of the learning curve has, has happened, and they're, they just, they fit in just like any other freshman. You'd have, you'd have trouble identifying them in the school, they just fit in so well, and they're doing great in the classes.
That's good.
It's really been a great program. We're actually going to the middle school Friday to start the process again with a group of seventh graders.
So you just answered my question, so we'll definitely be doing this next year?
That's the goal.
Okay. That's great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions on the Course of Studies? I guess that's it, thank you.
Do we need to vote?
Well, we do have to vote, and in speaking with Dr. Sylvia, I don't know, it's up to you if you want to delay it, but this, this was something that he, that he was, he wishes he could have been here for this, and I don't mind voting tonight or not, but, but if it's okay to hold it for the next...
I really appreciate a vote, we're already two weeks behind because of snow tonight.
Oh, yeah, true.
And Dr. Sylvia, he has my number, he can certainly call me if he has any concerns.
Mr. Lazarus?
I move that we accept the Program of Studies as presented by Mr. Palladino.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Are those in favor, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Four zero.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, folks.
Next item on the agenda. Domestic violence leave policy.
Uh, we presented you in your packet with the, um, law that was voted into effect in August eighth, two thousand fourteen. This law is applicable to any public and private employees who employ fifty or more employees, employers who employ fifty or more employees in Massachusetts. The Mass School Committee Association has put together a proposed policy. What we did is we then took it to our school attorney, asked them to review it, make any suggestions. And so, just to briefly provide you an overview of this, it's responsibility of the employers. The employee must give notice with the exception of immediate danger. At that point, there must be a three-day notice. If there is an immediate danger, then within three working days, the employee needs to make notification to the employer. There's documentation that needs to be presented to the employer. Examples of this would be a protective order or documentation issued by the court, letterhead on the court stating that assistance is required, a police report or a victim's statement, sworn statements signed under the perjuries of penalties provided by a counselor, social worker, or healthcare. This would be presented to the employer, and they would have the ability to grant a leave up to fifteen days during, from work in a twelve-month period. The protection is, upon the employee's return from such a leave, the employee is entitled to their original job or equivalent position. After reviewing with our attorney, Naomi Stoneberg, the employee must, she would suggest that we would put in the following. The employee must first exhaust all annual or vacation leave, personal leave, sick leave, that are already available to the employee prior to the request being taken. And if the employee has exhausted all time, the leave taken under the Domestic Violent Leave Act would be taken without pay. So, I'd ask the committee if you have any questions. Be happy to answer them. If not, this is a policy that is mandated by law.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Swett?
So, if, if I understand this correctly, the, the policy, to the extent that Mass did a good job of, of taking the law and turning it into a policy, the policy is pretty much a given, and the only flexibility the employer has is to determine what financial impact the leave has on the employee.
Correct.
Okay, so that's really the decision before us?
Correct.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
Do we need to approve this?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the policy as presented.
Sure.
Just for clarity, does that mean as amended by our attorney?
Yes.
Any further discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, are those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Are those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, next, next item on the agenda is presentation on background check procedures.
Um, what we've provided for you is just an overview of the quarry, the record request that goes in and Michelle receives on a regular basis. We then send out the approved quarries to each school on a monthly basis. At that point, on the second page, well, really, the third page of this handout, provides you with procedures on how volunteers are processed into the buildings. And so, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them. At this point, I really hesitated into getting into some of this as it comes under building security.
Any questions? Mrs. Vugan?
The second page is where I'm hoping that we continue to work collectively as a school system to come up with a unified policy. I think what this calls out is that there are different procedures that go on in each one of our buildings, um, and that we need a unified approach that is mandated or suggested by the school administration. So, I would ask that additional work is done on this and that it comes back to the committee to be presented on a single policy within each one of our buildings.
Okay.
Anyone else? Now, you don't need to vote on this.
No.
You know, I, I assume you've had discussions with Dr. Sylvia, but I'm just curious, what prompted discussing this tonight?
Me.
Oh, okay.
So, this came out of when the Policy Review Committee presented for our approval the quarry policy. The quarry policy is, you know, mandated, I mean, it is what it is. That we need to do quarry checks of all of our employees. But, really going down to a next level of, once the quarry is done, what is the procedure by which we are making sure that people that come into our buildings, that, that they're checked, to make sure that they do have a quarry? And that's why I was asking, what the, that's not a policy, what is the procedure that goes on in our building? So, I'd asked for that to be on this agenda, so it was presented to us. Now, I'm, now that it's presented, I'm asking that more work is done on it and come back and present something else.
Thank you.
Can I ask just a clarifying question? The Raptor system, does that check whether someone has a quarry or not? Or is it just that it goes through the system and then it prints out, it spits out a?
It goes through the system to check, to see if there's any outstanding warrants or charges against the person. No?
It's a sex offender registry check for anyone that's a level, a level sex offender.
So, it doesn't check whether someone has a valid quarry check or not?
Correct.
Okay.
No. Yes, yes, I am. Sure.
I'll be right back.
Are we gonna, should we continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we all set with that issue as far as you're concerned, Mrs. Vugan?
Okay, yeah, I'll follow up with the superintendent exactly some of the pieces that, in this procedure.
Okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is the vote on the fiscal year sixteen budget. Uh, we have had a presentation, uh, just chronologically. We met the January fifth deadline for a number to the town administrator, which was the recommendation of the superintendent. We then had a presentation on that number in first meeting in January. Then we had a public hearing on the recommendation by the superintendent in the following week. And a week ago, we were scheduled to vote on this, and some white stuff got in the way. Uh, and now we are here to vote on the recommendation of the superintendent. I'm sorry, Mike had to leave, but he will be back shortly. I, I feel it's probably appropriate to say that the advisory committee to the superintendent on the budget met last night with the town administrator and the, do you have a presentation?
Just the numbers.
And the business manager, Mr. McMillan, and of course, Dr. Shaverhood, as well as, as I said, two members of the Board of Selectmen. I think that's, I think I covered everybody. And the goal, and the goal was to take the requested budget, which produced a deficit of two point two million dollars, and see if we could get to a balanced budget in the reasonably near future so that we went into town meeting in agreement collaboratively, legally, et cetera. Mr. McMillan, you have a presentation for us?
Just, so at this point-
A summary of the, of the-
Really, just the, the budget request. So, at this point, we need to come before the school committee to ask them to vote, to ask you to vote for our FY sixteen budget request. And, we do that in the knowledge that discussions and negotiations are ongoing as we speak with the town and the town administrator to come up with a budget number. But as part of the town process, the school committee has to agree one at this point.
Um, you're, okay, back to your chair.
Thank you. Um, do you have anything to say, though?
I will, yes.
All right, I'm sorry, Mr. Vugan, do you have your hand up first?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I know the numbers are up there, and I also wanna thank the continued discussions that go on regarding the fiscal picture that we have in front of us. And especially the Board of Selectmen, the TA, his staff, the Budget Subcommittee, the school administration, the FINCOM, everyone that continues to take a look at these numbers and try to figure out what we're going to do with the limited funds that we have. I think that where I, at this time, at, at this time of the year, I always have a little bit of issue when it comes to voting because I'll, I know that it's a, it's a non-vote in a way, because we know the numbers will change. And, so my question is, I know that it is a requirement to be able to submit a number to the town administrator, which we have. Is it a requirement that we take a vote today, or tonight? Or can we delay a vote as we continue discussions and give the process, give the process that's going on right now, some time? So then we actually, when we actually do vote on a number, that it's a number that we feel has been vetted and the number that we continue to work on?
I know, I was just looking at the, the school's budget policy. That says that following the public hearing, the action of the school committee adopting the budget following the public hearing, but I just don't know how quickly it has to be after public hearing.
We also, according to the town charter, turned in a budget number prior to, with the assumption that it was the number from the school committee. So, I think we would like that vote, just because it is the number from the school committee. What happens after that, it can always go down, but it cannot go up. And I don't think that would be an issue.
Anyone else? Mr. Swett?
I, I agree with my colleague, Mrs. Vugan, that these votes are not particularly meaningful. I think the number that the charter requires just simply says it comes from the school. I don't believe it says it has to be a vote of the school committee. We met that goal. And it was designed to do precisely what it has done, which is to give the chief education officer, otherwise known as the superintendent of schools, the opportunity to say, in a, even in a less than perfect world, this is really the minimum that I think we should have to run the schools, and for the town administrator to incorporate that and see what happens. Even at this point, we don't really have good revenue numbers, they're just estimates. So, I am very comfortable with the fact that the school policy, since it doesn't state the date on which we have to vote, allows us to table this until we are more comfortable that the process between the superintendent and the town administrator has played out, and there is a number that is more realistic with respect to what we can expect to operate the schools next year. I, I think the, every dollar of the recommendation by the superintendent can be justified as supporting high-quality education. Every dollar that we reduce is going to have a negative impact. But nevertheless, it will be reduced. So, I think we just need to acknowledge that more work needs to be done. In theory, we could've started this process three months ago, but we didn't. And of course, the knowledge that we would've had three months ago would be even less than we have today in terms of what's, what the revenue is likely to be and what the expenses are likely to be. So, I, I share my colleague's concern about making a meaningless vote. And, and therefore, my recommendation is to table it to a date certain, which is to say, to pick a date when we are planning to meet and put that on the agenda.
Mr. Lazarus?
We all know that there are gonna be modifications to budgets, both for us and for the town. However, I think that our superintendent and the Budget Subcommittee has worked diligently with Mr. McMillan to come up with a number. I think it is incumbent upon us to support the superintendent and the Budget Subcommittee and Mr. McMillan in the number that they have come up with. If there's gonna be a modification of the number, it may very well be. But I think at this point, we've talked about this number for a number of months, and where we are, and what it means in terms of an increase over last year. And yes, there may be some things that are going to change, but I'm not in favor of tabling this, I'm in favor of voting for this number exactly the way it is. Because I think that we, as a school committee, and that we've gotta say, this is what we need to run our schools the way we feel they should be run for the citizens of this town and for the children that we educate every day.
Mrs. Vugan?
One of the things the superintendent just said was if the numbers, the number that's voted tonight could go down, but it can't go up. So, I did not attend the FINCOM, even though I wish that I had, as well as discussions that happened at the Board of Selectmen. But one of the things that I saw that came out of that was the idea of looking at what the in-kind costs are and adding that to the school budget. Hence, the number will go up. And so, are we, while those discussions are going on, you know, again, there, there are just, there are so many variables right now. And I, I believe that the number that is up there is the right number to be able to, it's the reason why we, we agreed to submit that number to the town administrator. So, that number is the number of what we're looking for, for a level-funded budget. But it is-
Level service.
Level, so, sorry, level service budget. But, it just, it keeps going back to, I, I don't think that a, that a delayed vote tonight would mean that there is any lack of support within this administration, that that is exactly the number that we need to be able to educate our children. Um, it is, though respecting the process and where we are in that process right now, that, to do a little bit more work and come up with a date, so then the vote that we take is meaningful.
I'm gonna go.
Your prerogative.
I, I question whether or not that number can't go up. I mean, we can vote ten times before, before we have to submit it. We can vote whatever we wanna vote. Uh, we can get, if it goes up too much, we can get laughed out of town meeting, but I think we can vote whatever we want. Is it, does anyone else disagree with that?
I think your vote, your number can, needs to stay, once we vote and we've turned it in and we'll look at the law, this would be a net school spending number. If other, if non-net was added to it, we haven't taken that into consideration.
Michael?
This is a non-net.
Non-net.
This has both net school spending and non-net school spending.
I, I, I still, I think I'm getting a nod over here from Mr. Swett that I think we can vote anything we want up until the time we have to actually submit, that, that, until the, the town moderator needs the figure. No? Yeah. So, I mean, to that end, I actually, I agree with Mr. Lazarus on this. I think that, I mean, I mean, everybody knows, this is really a placeholder. I mean, it's, it, the, the- everybody knows, this is really a placeholder. I mean, it's, the, the, the figure most likely will go down, maybe significantly, but, um, it's, it's, it's a starting point, and, and, and no, I mean, until we vote, the school committee hasn't presented this number, only the superintendent has. And it's our way of just saying, this is our number, I mean, it's something, let's work from here. And we do this every year, and.
I understand.
And why change it now? Uh, Mr. Swett?
It wasn't until Tuesday of last week, I believe, I could be wrong, that we actually got a requested budget document from the town administrator. That was, and then the meeting occurred last night. With that information, it now seems to me that if I was to vote for this budget, even though I know it's educationally necessary for Wareham's students, it would be essentially a repudiation of the town administrator and his ability to estimate, uh, revenue. I'm not interested in repudiating the town administrator. There is no way, with the revenue estimates that he has made, that we can afford the budget that we would all like to pass. It is simply not going to happen. And therefore, I would prefer not to be associated with a number that clearly has no meaning for the, for the future.
Uh, if there's no further discussion, we can take a vote if someone makes a motion.
I move that we, uh, accept this budget as is shown on the screen.
As chair, I won't make a second. Uh, is there a second? Seeing none, motion fails? Or it doesn't fail, or it just doesn't, dies? Um, any, any further discussion on that?
I'll say one thing. Uh, yeah. Just because we have done something in the past is not a reason to continue doing it just because it's the way that it's always been done. I think that what we are trying to do, what, meaning as a, as a town, is take a look at the real picture that's in front of us. So as a town, and I think that this happened when we first came up with a five-year plan of what we needed to do, and the five-year plan around revenue, the five-year plan about, around expenses, taking a look at a realistic picture of what is going on in our town and the revenue that's coming in. And so as a town, I'd like to say, let's give, I mean, we're already going to go to town meeting and ask for this whole entire process to be moved a little bit, so we're already going to try to do a, a warrant article to say, let's, let's push this out. So if we're, if we know that, and we're already looking at making that town charter change, why are we just voting just for the fact of voting? My, um, not seconding that motion has nothing to do with a lack of, uh, a, a lack of, uh, understanding or, um, desire to have exactly what that number is up there, or that I don't think that the superintendent and the administration, um, has put the right number, um, to the town administrator. Absolutely is the right number, we need to do whatever we can to get as much money into the school system as possible. It's just the fact of just voting, because that's the number up there. There's a process that's going on right now, let's respect that process, do whatever we can to, um, to be part of that process and, um, and provide recommendations, and also, um, make a strong argument of the reason why we need to get as much funds into their school system as possible, but then vote on a number that actually makes, looks like that it's actually going to pass a town meeting.
Here's, here's the issue I have, and it's the issue I have every year, this is why I always vote, to, to, to vote on a number. It's because after this meeting, there's not going to be a real number, there's not going to be any number. Well, there'll be the number that the superintendent came up with, and, and it's the superintendent's number, it's not the school committee's number. Now, the FinCom's gonna meet, and they're gonna try and discuss the, the budgets in the town and the school side, and they're gonna be like, well, schools don't really have, they didn't vote. I mean, that's, that's what I, that's how I've seen it work in the past. No?
I don't.
You, you did with the town's safety, you, you submitted a workable budget to the town administrator. It doesn't say that it's a final number, why didn't you go up or down? You met the deadline with giving them a workable budget. It's his budget to make it work. And, and they're gonna change many times over. Um, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't know the policies you have.
Excuse, excuse me, I, 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 no, I'd love to hear, I'd, I'd love to hear you, and I, I just wanted a yes or a no, but, but I get it, I, I, otherwise, I'd have you come up here and get on the record, just, but, but I, I get it. Uh, but thank you. All right, well, ha- having heard that, um, I mean, that, that, we, we had no vote anyway, so it doesn't really matter. So.
Doesn't mean we can't have a vote at next school committee meeting.
I, understood. Well, should we just move on? I mean, does it move?
No, I wanted to.
Okay, go for it.
Through you, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the superintendent, we have, uh, meetings scheduled for March fourth and March eighteenth. Do you think it's realistic for you and the business manager and the town administrator to have come together, um, by the fourth, or do you think the eighteenth is more realistic?
I would say the eighteenth.
So I, I move that we table the vote on the FY sixteen budget to, um, March eighteenth.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion on that? Seeing none. Uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. Uh, two, uh, two, it fails.
It'll be put on the agenda, whatever's put on the agenda.
Yeah. Um, sooner the better. Um, so, yeah, moving on to the next agenda item, then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Can I just ask, when is the next meeting with the Budget Subcommittee, the TA, the superintendent, um, based on a meeting that you guys had last night, is there, was there a follow-up on the, when the next meeting will happen?
Yeah, what was that, the twenty?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth.
The twenty-fifth, and are we currently, um, I know that there was talk about going in front of the FinCom, is that meeting scheduled?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is acceptance of gifts.
Yes. I would ask for a motion to accept the following gifts. Eight hundred dollars from Cape Cod Five Foundation to Wareham High School. This will be used, five hundred dollars to print the Viking Times newspaper, and to purchase six telescope kits and six tripods.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero, thank you very much.
Thank you. Nine thousand dollars from Gateway Tavern to the Wareham High School from their annual golf tournament. This will be used for the library media center.
Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Thank you very much.
Another reason to eat at the gate.
Yes.
Five hundred dollars from Cape Cod Five Foundation to the Cooperative School. This will be used for wellness lessons in culinary arts and personal finance.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Any further discussion? I actually have a question. Is it used for culinary arts at the cooperative? This year? Okay. Um, all right, um, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is that it?
It's for the gifts, yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, next item on the agenda is MSBA Statement of Interest, Deacon's School.
Good evening, school committee. So, we have a, you have before you a draft statement of interest from Wareham Public Schools to be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority to, and it's a, it's to, sort of request to become part of their, the initial phase of the accelerated repair program. So if we were successful in this application, then we'd become, we would have to carry out feasibility study to see if the work was actually possible. And this particular application is to do with replacing part of the, a Deacon's, the John W. Deacon Elementary School, to replace part of their roof and their current boiler, or two boilers. So it's really just, you know, the first step in the process.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. Any questions? Mr. Swett?
The part that this does not include of the roof.
Yeah.
Really has integrity?
Well, so, yeah, I mean, in the sen- it, the, the part of the roof that we wish to replace has had multiple, you know, as it says, multiple, multiple leaks for years, is constant, constant disruption to school whenever there's rain, that we're not suffering those problems in the rest of the school. There's no, that we're not suffer, I mean, it's an old, it still is an old roof, but we're not having leaks, it was well-installed. And really, we're trying to submit, so my reasoning with this SOI, with this statement of interest, was to submit the one that showed the greatest, you know, the greatest need, I think, that we desperately need to replace that part of the roof, which is why.
But, but the roof is all one age, correct?
No.
No.
Ah.
No.
This part is.
Oh, so the part we are replacing is older?
Is even older, yeah. And it's different, it's a different style, so that it's, and it's not as, uh, effective.
So, okay, I'm, you know, normally, you, the larger the project, the better deal you get. If you'd separate it into two projects, you may end up spending more, even, e- even on a net present value basis, you end up spending more. But if there's an obvious reason for doing this.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're, if you see the aerial photo, they're, it's like the roofs of different buildings.
Got it, thank you.
Any further discussion?
So under the, the MSBA requirements, there's a vote language that the, the school committee is require, requested to, uh, use in coming to this agreement.
Uh, what was the last part of what you said?
In coming to the agreement, so you have to read out the, uh, submitted.
I hear you. Do, do I have, do I have a motion?
Is, is that the motion?
Well.
You have to read it, I think.
Yeah, I, I thought, I thought you said that the maker of the motion had to, had to read it.
Yeah, right.
I can read it for you, if you'd like.
So, so who's?
I'll, I'll make the motion. Do you have it in front of me?
Yes. Do I have a second?
But I need to read it.
Oh, sure, yes.
Yeah.
Um, I move that we, that having convened in an open meeting on Wednesday, February eleventh, prior to the closing date, the school committee of Wareham, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated January twenty-ninth, two thousand fifteen.
Jeff.
Point of order.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, feel free.
That date, so that second date, that January twenty-ninth, can you change that to February twelfth?
I was wondering, as I read that date, whether it was.
Yeah, so it's because that was from the previous meeting, so it should just be.
Statement of Interest Form dated February twelfth, two thousand fifteen, for the John W. Deacon's Elementary School located at seven sixty Main Street, Wareham, Mass., two five, oh, two five seven one, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority category for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Replacement, renovation, or modernization of school facility systems such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. The Statement of Interest seeks replacement of the boilers and a section of the roof, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, Massachusetts Buildings, School Building Authority is in, is in no way, this language is, in, oh, sorry, in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Wareham Public Schools to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Is there a, is there a second?
Second.
It's all by way of saying it doesn't really mean much.
Uh, any further discussion on that? Uh, seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? A passes four zero zero. Next item, financial reports. Uh, Mr. McMillan, and transfer requests.
So, uh, you have two, we've got backed up by you, so you've got two monthly expenditure reports before you from November and December. As you can see, as we compare our costs from this year so far to last year, it's kind of neck and neck in terms of the percentage remaining at this stage compared to the per- percentage remaining at the same point last year, which is good. Um, I think broadly, you know, a- as we knew when we set this budget, it, it was going to be, there's very little wriggle room, it's a very tight budget, we, every penny is accounted for, so that's just where we are. There is not a lot of, um, there's not a lot of room in this budget. We have benefited from the low, well, we had a, we've got a reasonably good energy contract in place for gas and electricity, which has helped, and our usage of, uh, gas has been a little lower than this same stage last year. Of course, the recent storms will have affected that, so that's helping. The salary costs are roughly where they should be, and the only, I mean, the big area that's always one we have to watch out for is our district costs. We've been reviewing them, and, you know, it's, it's always a move, it's a moving picture as students come in and out of different placements, or they go out of district when they weren't before, and that's the sort of, that's the, my areas, area of biggest concern at the moment.
Any, uh, questions or comments? Mr. Swett?
Um, three, three quick questions. One is, I was surprised to see that at this time last year, we had spent essentially all of the testing and assessment budget, and this year, we've spent essentially none of the testing and assessment budget. Is there a reason for that? I thought there might be. Someone behind you has certain expertise that she'd be willing to share.
So, I can also, a bit prior to my colleague, he's down at this point, last year, there had been a position in the district for testing and assessment, which, uh, was, was unfilled and then cut from the budget.
So these are wages as well as expenses?
The previous year, it included some wages, which is not reflected anymore.
They're not just expenses.
Exactly. And then from this year, I know, sure.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, some of the money was saved as a result of the FAST Assessment, replacing the G-maid and the, uh, there was another assessment that they did in this district, I guess, prior, which included a lot of scanning of Scantron machine, the, the scanning, uh, papers that you need to buy, and then the test product itself, to provide the test that the students needed, was part of that cost. And, um, the FAST Assessment is quite a lot less, um, than that, and it's done electronically mu- all of it. And so all of that was saved as a result of transferring from one system to the other.
So you would expect for this particular lineup to actually end the year with a surplus?
Yes.
Yes.
Good, thank you. Um, two other things. Um, lease of equipment, copiers and, and the rizographs?
Rizographs, yeah.
I don't know what a rizograph is.
It's like, um.
It's actually a negative number.
So that's, there's a couple of outstanding POs, we're in the discuss, we're in, I think we've been, we've been over invoiced as an error that I'm working to correct.
Okay, so I'll, I forget about that. And then, um, you mentioned your biggest fear, which is, I think, mine as well. Um, payments out of districts, right now, um, it looks pretty good. You've got another expert behind you. Um, nineteen percent last year, thirty percent this year remaining. Should we take some comfort for that, or no?
No.
No, we should not take any comfort.
No. So it's just to do.
Isn't, didn't you know part of your job is to make school committee members feel more comfortable?
That, so, at this stage, really, that just reflects. That, so, at this stage, really, that just reflects PO has been cut.
Timing.
So, yeah. So in the past, in, eh, last year, we just cut many more of the POs by this stage. Whereas it's not, it's unlikely that, so there's just, there's been some delay in billing from a couple of the providers, or they're just, students have only recently moved into placements and POs haven't been created.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, that's it. Do you want to move on?
I do have, yeah, so I've got three transfers to request of the school committee. So, I know that this is one area where we have, eh, needed to come for you more often, so, as a, so my plan, my intention is, as a matter of routine, if necessary, this will be included as monthly reports.
Is pensioned.
So the one, the, the three requested at this point are to trans- so the first one is really just a tidying up of our chart of accounts. So there was a twenty-one thousand dollars, eh, in an, in the middle technology paraprofessionals account, but it had the wrong function code, so it falls within the wrong major account. I just want to move it into the correct major account.
That, that was just a clerical error?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, well, it's, eh, I don't know if it's much cler- clair is improving the precision of our, you know, the allocation of our funds, making sure that they're in the right fun, the right, eh, function codes.
I like that.
He's a tidy fellow.
He sure is. He's got attention for that.
Eh, the second, eh, the second one is just a small amount of money from contracted services under business and finance to personnel, just to cover ID cards, which have not traditionally been carried out in the district, and we've just got that project underway over the last year or two. Eh, and the last one is, eh, four thousand dollars from instructional, from Deacon's instructional other to textbooks. So they do have sufficient funds in instructional other, but they want to buy textbooks, which should be out of the textbooks account. So we really just wanted to transfer the money over to textbooks. I mean, it's kind of the same type of expenditure, because it's all related to instructional support and-
Okay. Um, any questions from Mr. McMillan? Um, I guess we have to vote on these, um, each one line at a time?
I don't think so.
No?
Oh, and the transfers, yes, 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 absolutely. Sorry.
Transfers, yeah, yeah. Uh, so I guess, um, do you want, should we do them all at once, or one line at a time?
One at a time, it's fine.
All right. So do I have a motion to move, uh, twenty-one thousand, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars from the paraprofessionals' major account to the building technology major account?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Uh, do I have a motion to transfer five hundred dollars from the business and finance major account to the personnel major account?
So moved.
Second.
All those appo- all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. Do I have a motion to move four thousand dollars and, four thousand and fifty-five dollars from instructional other to the, from the instructional other major account to the textbooks and related software media materials major account?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four zero zero. That's it.
Thank you very much.
Um, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In looking at this agenda, we skipped number ten. Do we have to vote on that article?
No. Number ten? That, that was the financial reports. That was the, uh, the monthly-
This is the article for Springtown Meeting.
You have the old agenda.
I'm sorry?
That was the agenda from two weeks ago.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I'm worried there for a minute.
Thank you.
It's next.
So are we concluded with item number ten?
Yes.
Okay. So moving on, Superintendent's Report.
So this is just what Mr. Lazarus was referring to. So we do have, uh, an article to submit to the town meeting, which is really at this point a placeholder in case we are successful in our application for the MSBA Statement of Interest for Deacon's. So if, so we're in, so the, the Statement of Interest, which you've just approved, that will be submitted to the MSBA. Then if we are then selected to be part of the accelerated repair program, we will need to fund a feasibility study. And in order to fund that, we'll need to go to town meeting to get the funds. And that is what this article, that's, this is our article, just because with these things and what we've found in the past is, if you don't get, you know, if we don't get in now, then we miss our ton, we miss our chance, and the next meeting is not until the fall, and it can really say, set our timescale back.
So you're looking for a vote on, and how, we, do we have to read the whole thing? So, I'm-
No.
Looking for a motion to approve the Warren Article titled John W. Deacon's Elementary School, colon, MSBA Accelerated Repair Proposal?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Quick question?
Sure.
Um, are we thinking about, uh, submitting a simi- a similar, uh, placeholder or article in case we get approved for the minute, uh, project?
That process is a little bit slower.
So there's, it's a bit slower, so the deadline's not until A-, it's not until April, which is, you know, April twentieth, I think, which is when the spring mi- meeting is anyway. So, we would, there's, we would not know in time for that spring meeting.
Okay.
Re- I, even if, even if we are successful-
Because the deadline is April, and then they'll let us know after April whether, so we'd have to automatically go to fall.
Yes. Exactly. Exactly. So we'd, we'd miss that, yeah, exactly. We'd miss that window anyway.
Okay, thank you. Just want to make sure.
So, are we, we concluded on that one? So moving on to-
No, I have a few more things.
Oh, sure.
Sorry. I handed out, um, a draft of the school calendar, two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. We certainly appreciate the cooperation of the Educators Association with Dr. Schwam in coming up with this draft proposal. It will be placed on the March fourth agenda to be voted on.
You're saying you handed it out?
I did.
Yeah.
I didn't get one.
I mean, I, I've only had, I've only had a, a few minutes to just glance at it before the meeting, but eh, the first thing I noticed is we start a week early, right?
We do.
And, and that's already been vetted through the-
It has.
Teachers Association?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
To be voted on March fourth?
Correct.
One way or the other.
Correct.
Um, I, I guess, just cursory level, were there any other changes, any reductions in holidays or anything? No?
Uh, are Christmas vacations shorter?
Shorter, okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, anything else from the Superintendent's Report?
Um, yes. Couple things. We received notice on the-
It's dangerous.
Review for the McKinnon Vento homeless. It will be a review that will be held, um, overseen by Dr. Marks. And I've asked her to come to a meeting in March to present the CPR. There's three view, three reviews that we're undergoing this year, and so we just thought you might like a overview of the process and what to be expected. So, if, if we're not able to bring it in March, hopefully then in April.
Mr. Swett?
I, I noticed in, uh, the town administrator's budget, that line item, um, is listed as eighty thousand dollars for FY sixteen. For FY fifteen, it's listed at a hundred. For FY fourteen, it was one sixteen. And for FY thirteen, it's one thirty-four. So, to say there's a downward slope is an understatement. My question is, is this as a result of fewer students, or lower reimbursement, or both?
I certainly don't think fewer students, um, but we'd have to check on the exact reimbursement rate, and we can get that to you.
The really sad part of this is that it is, assuming it's a reimbursement plan, the auditor, uh, I think her name is Suzanne Bumps, got all sorts of kudos for pointing out that this was an unfunded mandate and for requiring the legislature to fund it. And no one seems to notice that they, they do so, and then they continue to say, well, we can't afford it, so they er- erode the, the funding. And it has a big impact on, on towns like Wareham. It's just, you know, to go from one, one hundred and thirty-five thousand to eighty thousand and still be requiring all that service is, is just another unacceptable example of the way this state treats cities and towns.
I-
Sorry for the diatribe, but I-
I kind, I kind of wondered about that myself. It's like, how, how do they, how do they get away with that? I mean-
Because of the legislature.
But, but the auditor, I don't know. Anyway, um, oh, that, that completes the Superintendent's Report. Okay, next item. Uh, school committee reports, uh, policy review committee recommendations.
Uh, Mr. Lazarus and I met with the rest of the Policy Review Committee on January twentieth. Um, by the way, I'd just like to say it's a, it's a really good group of people, and we appreciate the, uh, the efforts that the, uh, parents and, and teachers make to be there, as well as members of the administration. Um, I'll take these relatively quickly, but even though I'm taking them quickly, I want to assure you that in, and in some cases, there's all sorts of interesting debate, and it's, it's an active and, uh, and constructive process by which we ultimately sometimes come up with no change. And that is the case with AP testing. This was a situation where we actually tabled it, asked Mr. Palladino to join us, and after much discussion, it was decided that, uh, the policy as it stands, however brief, um, is in fact appropriate. So we're recommending no change to the AP testing policy. You want to take these individually, Mr.?
Yes, please.
Chair? That's what I thought.
Um, do you, do you all have the policy in front of you?
Mm-hmm.
Um, do I have a motion to accept no change to the policy?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Uh, the next one is athletic ticket prices. Um, this one, we are recommending a change. In bold, you see, it now says chi- children, um, through grade eight. I'm trying to remember what it said before. Do you remember, Michelle? I think, it probably didn't include, probably didn't include pre-K and, in any event, um, the children through grade eight requires some kind of adult supervision. And we have deleted, uh, the section, um, the third section regarding parents of athletes. It turns out that it basically was administratively cumbersome and rarely ever used. Uh, so what we're left with is the two paragraphs above that, um, with only the one change, which is children through grade eight will be supervised.
That's, that's the only change? And down here, that's not-
That's deleted.
That's delete, oh, okay.
Yes, exactly.
I make a motion to approve as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Next one is guest speakers. Um, this one was left unchanged, with the exception of the fact that we added in paragraph three, after the building, after, must contact the building principal, we have added, and will be escorted at all times during their visit. I think the Policy Review Committee, as well as this committee and administration, perhaps all staff, are acutely aware that unescorted people are unacceptable in the building, even if they have been fingerprinted, um, and of course, in some cases, they haven't been. So, you will see this come up again in another policy, but that's the only change.
I move approval.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Next, curriculum adoption. Uh, only one change here, um, which is to say, uh, the title of, um, Dr. Schwam's position was, was incorrectly labeled as District Director of Curriculum, and we added an, an instruction to the title. Otherwise, it, it remains the same.
Move to accept the curriculum adoption as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Next is educational research. Um, the only changes occurred at the top, if I remember correctly, yes. Uh, we deleted the first paragraph and added the second paragraph. And the point here is, we don't want educational research coming to us for approval that hasn't already been approved by the Superintendent as the Chief Education Officer. So, this basically says, get it approved by the Superintendent, and then the Superintendent will pass it on to the school committee. Until then, uh, this, the school committee does not see it as necessary to look at any proposal for educational research.
Move approval as amended?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Next is meals, um, policy and pricing. It turns out, even though we are now fortunate enough to be able to offer, uh, free breakfast and lunch to all of our students, um, the policy actually was, was general enough that we really didn't need to change anything. Keeping in mind that when students come back into the line for seconds, additional food, there is a charge, so pricing is still relevant.
Move to accept meals policy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, I'll, I'll, I'll ask. Um, breakfast, lunch, and milk prices will be determined by the school committee.
Correct.
Have, have we, have we ever done that?
Oh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
When? Two years ago. Oh, not, not, not every year, no. So, so the prices, the prices in effect are two years old at this time. Is that what you're saying? They haven't changed in two years?
That maybe, yeah, that's probably true.
Okay. Interesting, okay.
We try to stay competitive, and if they're competitive, we don't tend to change them.
Okay. Um, uh, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Any abstentions? Uh, passes four zero zero.
Special education programs, observations of. Um, the only change on this, once, once again, consistent with, uh, guests being escorted, is we added a fourth bullet, which reads, the parent or parents designee must be escorted at all times during the observation. Otherwise, the policy remains unchanged.
Move to accept the policy as changed.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any, any opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
And finally, substance-free workplace. I don't recall, and no, we did not have any changes to this policy.
Do I have a motion to not, um, accept the policy as is?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Um, opposed? Abstentions? Passes four zero zero.
Now, Mike, did you want to bring up the issue of, that you brought up at policy review regarding the fingerprinting requirement?
Mike?
Did I, did I say Mike? I'm sorry. I'm looking at Mel.
Mike's over there, I'm up here.
Mel, did you want to bring that up?
Yeah, I do want to bring this up. I would like us to adopt for the fingerprint policy the timeline that the state has adopted, which is that because the staff is fingerprinted on a rotating basis, there are some staff members that act as chaperones for events that have not been fingerprinted. And if we move our timeline to the same as the state, which means everybody's got to be done by July of sixteen, we're, we're going to be fine.
So in effect, you're, you're, you're saying, any individual that has not been asked to be- So in effect, you're, you're, you're saying, any individual that has not been asked to be fingerprinted, but has been corried, is still eligible to be a chaperone, escort, et cetera?
Correct. Correct.
And they would only cease to be eligible if they were asked to be fingerprinted and had failed to do so.
Correct.
We had one incident at the high school where, um, president had to run out and get fingerprinted out of chronological sequence, just so there was a sufficient number of chaperones for the event. I think this is what brought it to our attention. Dr. Shaverhood, do you have an opinion on this?
We've I think whatever, in order to ma- to ensure that we have enough chaperones, then I would agree with Mr. Lazarus's request. Because we have run into some difficulty in finding the chaperones that are fingerprinted, and there are only so many slots that people can sign up for to be fingerprinted, so it would make it easier for our staff.
Okay, so I think sequentially, that means, Michelle, if you could add this to the next policy review committee meeting, which time, si- you'll take it up, which I think it's scheduled for early in March? Yeah, early in March, and we'll bring it back to the committee, uh, in March.
Okay.
That's, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Sweat. Um, Michelle, when, when the meeting notices go out for the policy review, do they list the policies that will be reviewed on the? Yeah, I, I, I think we need to do that on the, the school committee agenda as well, so the public knows what's being voted on that night, you know, I mean, we just, we just voted on like five or six policies that the public had no idea was going to be voted on, so-
I think that's a good idea.
So in the future, I'd like to do that. Alright, um, but moving on, on the school committee reports, we have Cape Cod Collaborative?
Oh, sure.
Mr. Lazarus.
Well, I was gonna read this entire booklet to you, because that's your annual report, and I figured that that would probably put you to sleep. So, if you'll bear with me, this is one page. Uh, Cape Cod Collaborative provides services beyond those that school districts are able to provide for its students. Uh, it's divided really into two parts for students. One is the STAR program, provides services that might require districts to provide excessive transportation or residential placement for students. It focuses on social skills development, behavioral management, technology, data management, professional learning, and professional learning communities. Uh, tuition rate for the STAR program is two hundred and thirty dollars per day. Uh, the collaborative also has the Waypoint Academy. Uh, this unit provides a means to educate the students that could not be maintained in a district public school. Uh, the goal is to return the student to the Sunday district. Uh, tuition for Waypoint has an average, it ranges from right around two hundred to up to about two hundred and forty dollars, averages out at about two twenty-five a day. Uh, the collaborative also provides professional development for teachers, an example is the Off Cape In-Service Day held every year, and, uh, last year, just over six hundred and fifty educators were involved in that. Uh, there are other services the collaborative provides. Uh, Center for Executive Search, Cape Center for Graduate Education, International Student Housing Hosting Initiative, and Virtual High School. Uh, the collaborative also assists districts in meeting and coordinating transportation needs in the areas of regular and special education. That being said, from our standpoint, the FY fifteen budget appears to include eleven students at a total tuition of four hundred and eighty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-six dollars, and beyond that, transportation costs of sixty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars, for a total of five hundred and forty-nine thousand twenty-six dollars. So, that is my annual report from the Cape Cod Collaborative.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Uh, any, any questions for Mr. Lazarus? Oh, come on, ask him.
Oh, I will also say-
Where are you getting that money from?
I will also say that last week, I went to the Cape Cod Collaborative Legislative Breakfast that was hosted, uh, which was chaired by Mr. Sweat, very interesting, uh, morning.
Thank you for your time on that.
You're welcome.
You too, Mr. Sweat.
With your approval, I'd like to augment Mr. Lazarus's comments under any other business.
We are under any other business, does anyone have any other business? Mr. Sweat?
Um, as, as, as some of you may know, I'm chair of the, uh, Cape and Islands, which includes Wareham and Borne, um, chapter of Massachusetts Association of School Committees, we had our, I don't know, third or fourth annual legislative update. Uh, Mr. Lazarus and Dr. Shaverhood were there, uh, and we had two state senators and probably three or four state representatives there. That was the primary reason for, for, um, the gathering. I'd say there was probably, I don't know, thirty or forty people in the room. It was interesting because there was, there were certainly differences of opinions among the legislators. But I think, uh, it was very clear to me, and Mr. Lazarus and Dr. Shaverhood may have a different opinion, and I'd be happy to hear them share it, that one of the big problems we have, uh, with our budget process, is the fact that Chapter Seventy has basically not been updated, um, since the early nineties. And that has produced insufficient funds for about eighty percent of the Commonwealth's school districts. We considered it a victory when in the last legislative session, they agreed to actually have a commission to study the Chapter Seventy formula. And in fact, the day after, this past Saturday, uh, there was a hearing on the Cape to let people talk about their feelings about the Chapter Seventy formula. The very real possibility, however, is that this process may end up in, as a zero-sum game. And I use those words advisedly. Game in the sense that it's not going to be productive, and zero-sum in the sense that some school districts got more, some school districts will get less, but in the end, there's no money to actually fix the problem. So, uh, my optimism about this commission is, as you can tell, very limited. And I was even further, uh, concerned when one of the state senators acknowledged that the real reason there isn't more money for public education, uh, which includes higher education as well as K through twelve, or pre-K through twelve, is the fact that we spend too much money on healthcare. So, I wish I could say that I was optimistic about public school funding in the future, but unfortunately, healthcare just gobbles up any excess money the state has, and, and as the, um, as the second most important, or excuse me, as the second largest, uh, consumer of the budget, we, we end up getting, um, the dregs after healthcare has taken what they need. It's a very pessimistic view, I apologize for it, but I think you're entitled to know the truth.
Well, that's depressing.
If I may-
Go ahead.
Unfortunately, I agree with you. And this is the first of the legislative breakfasts that I've gone to at the collaborative, but I have gone to the Plymouth County legislative dinners. And with all due respect to our legislators, they pay a lot of lip service to education. But I don't see any of them coming forward and saying the nineteen ninety-three Act did not do its job, even though there are two Supreme Court decisions saying that, both out of Brockton, that the distribution of funding for Chapter Seventy is wrong. The legislatures sit on their hands. And I agree with Mr. Sweat when it comes to the issue of available funds. But the reality is, it's politics. And that's too bad, because the, the children of the state get caught in the middle.
Let, let me ask you this, um, I know that there's a, there's a minimum, like there's for certain towns that can perfectly afford their education, whether, whether they can afford all of it or, or not, they, they get that minimum figure, what is that figure?
Seventeen and a half percent.
Seventeen and a half percent, I mean, is there any appetite to go after that?
No, for just the reason that Mr. Lazarus said. The political lobbying of those people who are, and by the way, there's a lot of those on the Cape, uh, the political lobbying of those people who are under the seventeen and a half percent to keep getting their seventeen and a half percent is stronger than the political lobbying of places like Wareham. That's, that, I, I'm sorry, that's the truth.
Yeah, no, that is what it is. Alright, well-
Yes, Weston gets seventeen and a half percent.
Yeah. And what do we get?
We get a little over forty. Middleborough gets a little over fifty. And the Cape, as I said, with the exception of two towns on the Cape, I believe one of them is Sandwich, they're all under seventeen and a half percent, if you calculate it purely, so they get raised to seventeen and a half percent, and as far as I'm concerned, that's our money.
Yeah, me too. Me too. Um, anyone else?
Just one thing that doesn't have to do with this.
Oh. Anyone else want to talk about this?
She's tired of being, you know, disappointed.
Go ahead, go ahead, Mrs. Yugen.
Yeah, exactly. Um, this just goes back to the vote on the budget, I think that's just important just to say one more thing, that the initial request, or my initial request to delay the vote, I feel it's important to say that it should not be interpreted as, one, a lack of confidence in the numbers, or exactly how the superintendent and the administrators have presented them, two, that it weakens our ability to discuss, negotiate, and fight for all necessar- necessary resources for our students. The number that is in the TA's requested budget at this time has been presented to the Board of Selectmen, the FINCOM, and the public. That's the number that's in there. Anyone feeling that this, um, that, anyone feeling that, um, in a way, that it does diminish our ability to negotiate, is under, underestimating the process, the school committee, and the work that will continue to go into it. Thank you for allowing me to say that.
Uh, anyone else?
I second.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
We're adjourned.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Nice job, Mike.
You think so?
Nice job, Mike.
You think so?